Or adopt the agenda?
Chair, check your email I sent you, the teleprompter.
The commission to order, we have a roll call. This is the budget workshop agenda as well as 10 o'clock, day June 12, 2025. Leah, will you call roll?
Commissioner Freitas?
Sure.
Commissioner Kalapa is excused, Commissioner Kalakini?
Hi.
Commissioner Kenea Kua?
Hi.
Mr. Lasu is excused, Commissioner Barfield?
Hello.
Commissioner Namuon?
Here.
Mr. Neves?
Hi.
And Chair Watson?
Here.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And carried. Okay, at this time, I guess we'll take public testimony on the agenda items. And it should be relevant only to this workshop. And we'll limit it you to three minutes. Okay, do you have anybody on the witness?
We do not, Chair.
Okay, Leah, why don't you call the witnesses for me?
Okay, Chair, we don't have anybody signed up at this time, so we can go right into the agenda.
Okay. Okay, we'll have Katie Lambert will present.
Aloha and good morning. I'm just waiting for the PowerPoint to come out. I know it takes Mike a little bit. Mahalo, Mike. So my name is Katie Lambert, for the record, deputy to the chair. Notably, I am here because the Department of Hawaiian Highlands lacks an ASO, an administrative services officer since our last one left to take an appointment to be the deputy of D-Herd. So I am here presenting the budget workshop in anticipation of requesting an approval of the fiscal year 2026 budget on Monday. We're gonna start with a budget process overview. Basically, it's just about timings, oh, sorry, next, yeah. The state fiscal year begins July 1st to June 30th each year. So for people's frame of references, we are currently in fiscal year 2025, which will end in a few weeks on June 30th, 2025. So today, what we're doing is we are preparing our commissioners and giving you the information ahead of the approval we're going to be requesting for fiscal year 26. So that year starts July 1st, 2025, and will go through June 30th, 2026. And at this point, this is the budget that has basically been gone through the legislative process in 2025 earlier this year. So we kind of have the definitions of it, right? We have the outside boundaries of what the legislature approved. There is a caveat to that. So the HB 300, which is the budget bill in 2025, has not yet been officially signed by the governor. In fact, it is on governor's list of vetoes. We don't have any clear information on that. The governor has reserved his right to make line item vetoes, is my understanding of, you know, what he needs to do, might have to adjust. To our knowledge at this point, we are not aware of any intentions by the governor of line item vetoes that would affect our program, but we are, of course, monitoring it. Okay, and then, looking forward in September, that's when we actually seek approval for the next fiscal year, '27, right? So in September, we'll come to you with our Nelson, or what we refer to as our sufficient sums budget. And that's our, that's basically the process starting all over again. That's, we come to you, we say these are our needs. It's usually very large because we believe it's our fiduciary duty post-Nelson to request sufficient sums for our entire program. Not what's realistic, not what we think we'll get, but what we believe is the sufficient sums that is provided in the Constitution for the Hawaiian lands program. So, next slide, please. And on that, so Article 12, Section 1 of the Hawaii State Constitution provides that. The legislature provides sufficient sums to the department for the following purposes. One, development of home agriculture farm and ranch lots. Two, home agriculture aquaculture farm and ranch loans. Rehabilitation, three rehabilitation projects to include, but not limited to educational, economic, political, social, and cultural processes by which the general welfare and conditions of native Hawaiians are thereby improved. And finally, four, for the administration and operating budget of the department. So we do, especially post-Nelson, we emphasize that we kind of build our budget around each of these four, and you'll hear staff kind of shortcut it, right? This is for purpose one, this is for purpose two, and this is what we mean. We go by the enumerated purposes of the Constitution. Now, when we're building the budget and our workshop materials follow the enumerated order, development, loans, rehabilitation projects, four, and then A and O. But when we're actually talking about the budget, it does get confusing if we try to stick to this order. So just for everybody's frame of reference, when we're going, when we're talking about the budget, we're gonna take this a little bit out of order, just because it makes the most sense and because I'm up first to talk about the operating budget. So we're actually gonna start with purpose four. And in that, in my coverage of that, it'll touch on purpose two, the loans, and purpose three, the rehabilitation projects. And this is just an overview. So, the timing wise, commissioners and also the public should be seeing the packet for the H1 submittal for Monday. And that will provide more details about the operating budget. We're gonna save for last the development budget, which is Kalani. And he will talk about basically purpose one and purpose, because there's also purpose four and the development budget. So, that's just the way that we're going to, I just wanted to give a disclaimer that we're not necessarily gonna be going in order as enumerated here. Okay, next slide. So first and foremost, though, we're gonna give a summary of our internal funding sources as well as our external funding sources. So internally, we do have two special trust funds, excuse me, two special funds, five trust funds, and two revolving funds. And within the budget workshop materials, the, each of these are, you know, have a really detailed explanation. Basically, the information in the workshop materials that goes through each of these comes, you know, the department has been using this since Rodney Lau, who of course had been carrying the ASO responsibilities for years. So we don't mess with something that we know is good, right? So the substance of what makes up each of these special, each of these funds is there in your budget workshop materials, but I'll go over them quickly for the purposes of presentation. So, next slide. The special funds, the first one is the Hawaiian Home Administration Account. Shortcut, we often refer to it as the admin account. It's used for operating costs in the absence of and to supplement general funds. So basically, post-Nelson, right, we advocate that, you know, we should be sufficiently funded through general funds for, shortcut A and O, administrative and operating purposes. So to the extent that what the legislature ends up giving us doesn't fully cover everything, we do supplement with general funds. The source of these funds is from proceeds and income from available land. So that's our general leases, licenses, revocable permits, et cetera. The second special funds is the Hawaiian Home Lands Revenue Bond, Special Bond Fund, used for payment of debt service obligations on bonds and as a reserve account as required by the bond resolution. And the source of it is the Hawaiian Home Admin Account. For trust funds, the first one is the Hawaiian Homeland Trust Fund. This is an account that was set up to receive payments made by the state from 1995 to 2015. So people usually know it or refer to it as our Act 14 settlement. And it was 20 annual payments of $30 million, and the remaining balance is currently invested. The second trust fund we have is our NERF, Native Hawaiian Rehabilitation Fund. So this is used for educational, political, social, and cultural programs. The funds come from ceded land payments, 30% of the receipt stemming from previous sugarcane lands. And then we have the Hawaiian Home Operating Fund. So they were two separate funds, and then in 1986, they were combined. However, functionally, they still are treated separately. So they, the sources loan and investment interest. And it is operating and development. So we do use this for operating purposes. Can you click? I think there's a second column, there you go. So the operating portion is used for activities that support the homesteads, also for appraisals, consultants, and other staff services. And then the development portion can be used for lot improvement and development, improvements to assets, consultants' equipment, land acquisition, but it does require the governor's approval prior to use for this reason. Then we have the Hawaiian Home Trust Fund. We use this for our loan programs, such as the FHA 247 and the USDA Guarantee Loan, which is basically the 184A. And then we have the Hawaiian Homes Receipt Fund, which is the, also used for, sorry, I'm blanking. So the funds are transferred into the Hawaiian Homes Admin Account, basically any of the other loan funds. So the interest that's generated, so some of our pots of money actually do generate interest income. So that income can be basically transferred into other accounts for use. Okay. We do have two revolving funds, the Hawaiian Home Loan Fund. So we use these to pay net proceeds when a homestead lease is canceled or surrendered, or when a leasing dies without naming a qualified successor. And then finally, we have the Hawaiian Home General Loan Fund, which is loans for various purposes, including home repairs and maintenance, purchase or construction of home. They can also, they also in the past have been used for loans related to farming, livestock and farm equipment and farm loans. Okay. We do have external funds, so of course, general funds is what we ask for when we go to the legislature. We are asking for our administrative and operating and our programs to be largely supported by the general funds that are appropriated through the legislative process. We also have general obligation bonds, which are issued for large purchases, especially when it comes to construction of new buildings and for repairs and maintenance of existing facilities. Then we have revenue bonds, which are issued for large purchases. Revenues from income-producing activities are used for the repayment of debt service on the bonds. And finally, we have federal funds, which are funds allocated through federal departments, programs, or through direct appropriation from Congress. So we do actually have a revolving fund that was established by the legislature beginning in 2021 for direct loans from the HOZIT. It was a way to basically keep track of that particular loan servicing debt. So you'll see that in when we talk about our loans. Okay, so going to the operating budget. This is an overview of our administrative and operating. And so this will be in the budget workshop. I believe it is the second, I'm sorry. It is the third section of the budget workshop materials. And I do apologize, so when this was, oop, can you go back? Thanks. So I did make some additions when I was reviewing it and preparing for this presentation because I do think it would help the commissioners and also the public who might be watching because the budgeting and the budget process is not necessarily intuitive. When you're looking at what the legislature produces as far as the budget worksheets and things like that, it doesn't necessarily lend itself to intuitive thinking. So I just wanted to, well, I wanted to start with some good news. For those of us who have been around for a while, we are aware of an issue where we had 19 authorized but unfunded positions. So starting in fiscal year 2026, July 1st of this year, we will have, we will have all 200 positions funding restored. So that's really good news. So we advocated and the legislature listened to us. And so we will have all 200 general funded positions funded. We are currently in the process, knowing that July 1st is upon us. The HR team is currently going through the process of meeting with all the divisions that have an unfunded position and saying, what are we gonna do with this? Because we want to fill them. The thing about these unfunded positions is that they've been unfunded since 2020. So it's been five years, and they may have been vacant for even longer. So whether or not they still fit within the programmatic needs we have today, we need to make sure that everything isn't in line. Because when we go out for recruitment, we don't want to recruit for a position that might not fit within the overall program needs. So that is underway as we speak.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Of the 181 funded positions, are they all filled?
No. So as of today, we have 35 vacancies out of the 181.
So now we'll be able to add 19?
19. So once we add the 19, there'll be 54 vacancies.
Thank you.
And these are just the general funded vacancies, right? So we do have our federally funded positions. So we have 12 Nahazta, and we have, through this legislative process, we also have formally recognized our three broadband positions. So we actually have altogether 215. But when we're talking about general funds, we only have the 200, yeah? So when, when we did this, we kind of lump summed the general fund amount. So that is the amount that the legislature appropriated to us in total. But you can see, I tried to kind of note it to make it clearer that of this 28 million, 13.1 is basically for our purpose four personnel service. It's called personnel, like personal as opposed to personnel, but that's basically personnel, right? And then for about 4.8 for other current expenses. So about 18 million is really for what is, are in our operating budget, admin and operating. So what is included, but not necessarily part of the operating budget, is 10 million. So the legislature since 2022 has added this $10 million amount for services to existing homestead communities. So that, we are going to actually direct for purpose three, and that is what planning will, usually, we're budgeting for planning to use for the grant process, right, to the homestead communities. But as you can see, I tried to, in the parents, you can see where I tried to, oop. No, no worries. Yeah, in the parents, I tried to know what purpose it is for and also what program ID it's related to, right? So HHL 625 is for administrative and operating. That is where our personal and other current expenses, things like postage, mailing, mileage, travel. Okay, those are, that's in the 18 million. And then the 10 million would be for purpose three. I also have an asterisk when you move down to the special funds, right? So the legislature gave us 4.8 in special funds, but there is kind of this anomaly in 2026, where if you were looking at what is publicly available, it's actually about 101. And that's because 97 million is an adjustment related to the Act 279 Special Fund ceiling. So that has nothing to do with A and O, right? So I'm just asterisking it here because you will see it when you look at our budget materials for approval on Monday. So the reason why it's so large is because for purpose one reasons and related to the programmatic, right, the HHL 602 program, the legislature basically added this ceiling amount so that we could plunk this amount out of where it was in fiscal year 24, I think, and then make it available to us in the special fund through the end of, through June 30th, 2026, basically. There was a mechanical function of our fiscal between us and DAGs and not being able to actually encumber the amount at the end of fiscal 24. So this bunny kind of got caught in no man's land. And so the legislature helped us out by saying, we recognize, you know, we understand what happened, and we're going to basically raise the ceiling so that you can basically drop it into the right special fund so that you can tap into it through the end of 2026. And then we do have about 3.7 that is appropriated by the legislature into our operating fund, and that we are going to put into our operating portion of the operating fund. Now, as far as non-appropriated funds, so funds not appropriate by the legislature, we are recommending 13 million in fiscal year 26. So those, that's the trust fund part of the operating portion. And then, I do wanna highlight the Native Hawaiian Rehabilitation Fund because it is zero, and I don't want people to be alarmed. Because remember, we're gonna put, we're gonna use $10 million of the general fund instead, right? So there has been concern that the NERF's balance has been basically drained. And because we do have this $10 million that is meant to basically do and support what the Native Hawaiian Rehabilitation Fund does, we're going to use the $10 million of general funds in place of our trust funds. Usually, you would see about 1 million or 1.5 million of trust funds there. Okay, and then the DHHL Revenue Bond Special Fund is about 3.2 million, as it has been the case for many years now. So that's not going to change. The total operating budget at the end of 2026, then, is about $52.8 million. Okay, next slide. Okay, so the, this is just to kind of show you the change year over year. So between fiscal year 25 and fiscal year 26, it's a reduction of about $3.4 million. If the commissioners who were around remember, there is a large bump between 24 and 25, and a lot of it is because out of the trust funds, we did, there was a request for two additional programs in fiscal year 25. One was for the system modernization, and that was about 2.7. And then the other was the Federal Grants Initiative, which was 4.2. So MOD, this year, will be presenting a little bit later on their budget. They don't, I believe, need all 2.7 again. They're going to be asking for a lesser amount for approval going into fiscal year 26. But we do not, we don't have the federal fund initiative. So that's been somewhat absorbed by the Land Development Division, and I'll let Kalani speak to that if you have any questions. So that's why the reduction. Okay, next slide. So going over our loans from here. So this has remained largely unchanged for several, unchanged for several years. I do wanna highlight the Nahazta column because that's where I was saying that the legislature had established by Budget Provisal or revolving fund specifically for Nahazta direct loans. So that's what that $7 million is. Next slide. And then projected fund balances. So this is an overview of our various trusts and special funds and the state of them. So at this point, very, you know, it's no pause, it's, excuse me, it's all positive. I do again wanna point out the NERF, the Native Hawaiian Rehabilitation Fund, T924. So that's what I was speaking to before. So we're not, if you look at the fiscal year 26 budget, we're not tapping into that. We do have about 3.7 million as of the end of May. And then, you know, the estimated revenues throughout fiscal year 26 is only about 300,000. So at the end of fiscal year 26, we're estimating about four. But that's why we wanted to try to shift, if we can, instead of using trust resources, what the legislature made available to us by way of general funds for the Native Hawaiian Rehabilitation purposes, or rehab, what we, excuse me, let me say that again, for purpose three rehabilitation projects, right? We achieve the same effect of purpose three by using basically what the legislature has provided to us in that $10 million appropriation. Next slide, I think, is, yeah. So the next section will be Kalani to go through his development budget. Thank you.
Aloha, Chair Watson and commissioners, for the record. My name is Kalani Franda, Acting Administrator for the Land Development Division. Mahalo, deputy for sharing explanation of our budget. And of course, we have a lot of terms that we utilize for our purpose one and purpose four. For the purpose of the development budget, I'm gonna refer to it as Part A and Part B as it is referenced in our budget materials. And so, along with me, I have staff in the event that you may have some questions as we go through these particular items. The first is part of the, it's, and I'm gonna go based upon the various counties that they are sitting in. And so I'll start off with Hawaii Island. Hawaii Island has a project that we have, and it is roughly about 63,000 that we're requesting. And part of the reason for this, it's a project that we had executed a memorandum of agreement with to really raise the next generation and being able to be involved with home development. And so this is a MOA that we have with Hawaii Community College, and the line item is called Hawaii Community College Home Project. We've already budgeted for some monies. The reason for this additional request is because there is added cost that's required in the installation of utilities. And this is something that our staff had gone through along with our partners in identifying the need for this, so we can continue to process and move through this program, which has been very beneficial to not only the homana that are going through this program, but also for beneficiaries. Because what this does is makes a property available for us to award to the waitlist. Next item is, oh, if you could stay on that, I have a second item, in Hawaii County. And this is in relation to our acquisition, a recent acquisition that we had for Honoka. Honoka has, most of the monies were identified and appropriated for the acquisition. We had some monies that we also had utilized for reports that provided us additional EK as we move forward in the development of this project. Some of the 2 million that we are asking out of the trust funds, Some of the two million that we are asking out of the trust funds is also gonna go towards reports specifically towards geotechnology, et cetera. It's a very, and I also have a project team here and to be able to provide additional information at the end of this presentation, if you have some questions in regards to that. Next item. This is also talking about some of our new projects. We're jumping to the other side of the Paeaina, which is in Kauai under Kauai County. And the request is for four point four or five million specifically related to some of the reports that we are needing. Once again, geotechnology reports, we're also going through identifying some of the reports that we need to execute our fit study, et cetera. So we can start to move forward in the project lease awards, which we anticipate will be taking place next year. Next item. Staying along lot development projects, and this is in regards to individual assistance. As we've been issuing project leases, there is a need for us to engage with numerous service providers. This allows for us to work with our beneficiaries in identifying the financial capacity that are, and capabilities that our beneficiaries have. And what we do with this type of assessments is we're able to work along with the developers. So we can start to develop, not based upon the cost of the development, but based upon the beneficiary's capacity. And so we've been identifying and working with certain service providers such as Hawaii Community Assets. We're also engaging Helen Y LLC, who has been seasoned in working with the department as well as Hawaii Lending and Investments, in which we have a program that we're working with them right now. So this will allow for us to move forward. We're in the process of roughly about, I think it's twenty two hundred leases this year. About there, and we're doing another thirty five hundred next year minimum. And so we really need to engage these types of partners to be able to assist us in going through the individual assistance. Next is, we have been, as you've been seeing almost every other weekend, we've had some type of event that has been taking place as it relates to awards. So whether it be orientation or actually lot selection or awarding of project leases. We do need some additional funds and we're requesting for two hundred fifty thousand to assist us as we put on. And these different events, this goes towards securing the venues as well as different resources that we need to put these on. I'm gonna jump over to purpose four, which is also in this presentation identified as part B. Next slide, please. Thank you. Next slide. So as we go down, the key thing for this is majority of this has been approved by the legislature. This is the twenty million that we had received. And that was approved by legislature in regards to CIP specifically for repair and maintenance and operations projects. The first item that you see is the seven point four million that we have for Kapole sewer repairs. Much of these, we have some communities that have, has been here for a while, such as Maluohai and some of Kaupea. And we're going through and improving the sewers. And one of the reasons for that is really working hard to bring these facilities up to par. So we can start to move and engage the county to be able to manage these. And so this is one of the reasons why we've identified this as one of the projects for the twenty million. The next item is the one point two million, and this is traffic calming. These are for islandwide in the sitting county of Honolulu. We have numerous requests that come up. And we've been working not only along with our community associations, with our planning office, but also with DFM, which is Department of Facility Maintenance. Because the traffic calming items that we put in, we want to make sure that it does oblige and does comply with DFM, the city and county of Honolulu. So we can move a lot of these roadway systems over for their management. We have quite a bit that still remains in our inventory. And we're, we only have four staff that is addressing roughly about one to two hundred projects statewide. And so the more that we can move over to the various counties, it allows for us to not be able to carry that capacity or that economic, financial capacity. The next, next slide, please. So this next one is for Molokai. We have several items that we've addressed. One is three million for Kapalkeha, or I'm sorry, for drainage improvements. And, or I'm sorry, for water system improvements. And this will be addressed, there's, we have a one hundred year old tank that's been there. And this will go towards not, not only improving that, it is an aging system. And so we want to make sure that we are carrying forth the needed type of water resource that we need for our beneficiaries on the island of Molokai. As well as we will utilize some of this to explore and needed reports that are required for us to explore opportunities that may fall also within the MIS system. And seeing what it'll take to be able to take over and manage that system as was requested by leadership. Next item is the Molokai Drainage Improvements. That's about a million, if you could go back, I'm sorry. Thank you. We're gonna stay on here for a couple more items. And so this, we have one million that's going to go towards Molokai Drainage Improvements. When the flood had occurred several years ago, we went through an assessment to take a look at all of the drainage issues that had taken place in Molokai, a lot of it, and that South Shore location. And so this is really putting monies towards implementing some of the assessments and strategies that we had taken a look at. And how it's informing us to look at prioritizing what's needed right now. So there's about a million right now that we're, that we're putting towards and appropriating to this particular need. And we know that we're gonna need additional, and so we're kind of gearing up and teeing up for that as well. We also have one more in Molokai, and that is Naeva. We have quite a bit of monies already allocated from various acts for Naeva. There's additional monies that are needed to accommodate some of the GT tax that is being placed upon this particular project. But this will open up quite a bit of lots that have been waited and waited upon by existing lessees as well as opportunities for a handful of, I think it was like twelve to sixteen more lots that will come available for those that are in the waitlist. Next slide, please. Moving to Keokah, this has been an item that's been on the books for a while. We've been planning for this and having discussions with the county. This is only a portion of what we need, but we've appropriated about five point nine million to go towards this particular master plan project. And some of it will go towards roadway, some of it may go towards the sewer improvement itself. Next item. So this is two million of trust funds that we're requesting. And this is specifically for repairs and maintenance and various improvements. Some of it goes towards our district offices and others are, go towards fire break needs that are happening within our various districts. And so this allows for us to be able to flex and utilize it for priorities that may come up. And that ends the presentation for development budget and CIP in general for part A and part B. And I'm not sure if I, should I open it up for questions at this time? If there's any questions, I have project managers that are present here that can also be able to provide answers to your questions.
Any questions, Gang?
Kalani. What's the, what's the timeline on repairs on Keokah Sewer?
If I could ask Kelbert, is Kelbert in? He's not, I will check on that for you.
Okay.
Yeah, we had just gone through and met with the mayor on finding ways that we could be able to move through some of these needs and maybe look at partnering with some other opportunities that we have to get this done. We are in the process of, I know Kelbert's been working on this for a number of years, and so this is
I can, I can check in with Kelbert too then.
Okay.
And same for Honoka, he's covered the guy.
No, I have Ray and Shereen, and they can kind of speak to that.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
What is the question?
Well, what's the, what's the plans with regards to Honoka? What's the current status and what's the next steps?
We had contracted to have the EIS process begin. I had the Geotech guys out on the site yesterday, and I expect their report in the next month or so. Once we receive that report, then we can make adjustments to the initial layouts that we had done to make sure that it accounts for the soil conditions on the site. We used Act two seven nine funds, as Kalani mentioned, for the acquisition and one point two million for pre-development. These additional funds will help pay for the architectural work that's still needed to be done, the phase one soil studies that need to be done as well. We can't proceed with development until all of that work is completed. I would anticipate the EIS process to be about two years to complete.
Right. Good news. Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Yes.
Kalani, just have some questions on the Wahehumaoka, there's no budget for Wahehumaoka. Can you tell me what happened with that? Last time we checked, that was, that was, we had, we had funding for that. Last time we talked about that was, I think, in November.
Yes.
What's the status of that?
So we're still moving through, there are a number of different processes that the developers are working on, kind of pre-development things, some of the entitlements, et cetera. So monies are still budgeted for, the DA's been executed. And moving forward on, some of it is off-site development projects that they're working on in order for these areas to actually be ready for develop onsite, in regards to the onsite site work.
But, but in this, I mean, this budget line shows zero.
We're not requesting any additional funds because we already had monies encumbered in the previous year.
So, but those funds should show up in, in, I mean, you chose your, your, no carryover and nothing for twenty six.
Oh, good point, yes.
Concern.
Oh, no, so that should be on there, and I'll double check on that.
Yeah, if we could, if we could fill those in, that would help. Let's see, so moving on to Kauai, my, I'm, since this is a workshop, I'm looking to make some requests for Kauai. We have, you know, the Anahola, the Anahola Farm Lot development is not in this, in this proposal. And, you know, the, the department's kind of, a lot of money and a lot of time improving our water source in Anahola with the farm lots.
Yes.
With the intention of building out those farm lots. So I'd like to see us put some money into building out those farm lots because the more people we put in those farm lots, it reduces the water subsidy that the department has to pick up for that water system. So more people we put on those, in those lots, it reduces that subsidy. So I'd like to see us
Are you referring to the Anahola?
Anahola Farm Lots, Anahola, our Anahola Water System.
Okay.
Yeah, because we, if we can put more people on that system, we can reduce our, our subsidy. Because I think we subsidize somewhere around two hundred fifty thousand a year. I'm not sure what the number is now. Then the other, the other thing is, I don't see anything in here for Anahola Residential Development Four. That was the next, Pete Lanning, Mike Ikai, the, the project four. I don't see anything in for that. I'd like to see something in there because we're tying, we should be able to, we're, we're tying to existing structure, so that should be an easy one. But we've got to figure out where we're gonna get the money from, I understand that. The other thing is, the Anahola Kulianna, the last time we talked in, in Kauai, we were looking at, at doing just the agricultural lots. I'd like to see the pastoral lots added to that because I think on the, when we asked, I forget who was one of your folks that was doing the, the study on the additional roadways for the pastoral lots, is that we get the, we get the millings free from the state. So I don't know if that was in his, his budget or not. That could save us sufficient, sufficient amount of money. We're gonna, supposed to put in a six inch cobble, redesign the roads, and then the milling. So the millings are free from the state, we just have to haul it. So if he could redo those numbers, I'd like to see that. The important part of, of having the entire complex is because we have to develop a community that's gonna manage that entire complex. So if we could do that and somehow get some money to, to fill that in. I, I don't know, you guys are the magicians, you've got to figure out where it's coming from. But I think it's, it's an important project because it's been on our, it's been on our, our table for years. And, you know, we had green energy come in and, and clear all the albezia. Now everything's overgrown, so we really need to, we really need to move that project forward if we can. That, let's see, on, on the Molokai issue, where, where you talk about the, the drainage improvements, those drainage improvements are the ones that are gonna take care of Kalamaua and Kapakea.
Yes.
Okay, the, when I was, I was there, I, I visited with Lawrence, and we went out and took a ride. There is a, a large area next to where the FISA lots are at, where the state came in and cleared a large area. And that's where all the water's coming. So hopefully we can get the state to do something with that because that's where all the debris's coming down. They haven't concreted that. But even if they do concrete it, you're gonna have water flow, so you're gonna have problems on the Makai side. So, so hopefully we can work with the state on that. The Keokah Sewer Improvements, what, what actually are we, we doing with that sewer improvements?
Actually, I'm gonna ask Kelbert to come and join us now. He will be able to answer some of the questions that Commissioner Kalakini and Commissioner Nevers had.
I know, I've heard that the, the state is, is putting some money into the plant itself. But as far as our sewer improvements, what are, what are we doing from this, from Kauai Home Site?
So for our section is to close out cesspools or help the families get a chance to close out their cesspools by putting in the sewer line. And then when the county is ready with their wastewater treatment plant, they, they can accept that extra capacity.
Okay. Let's see, I think that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then to answer Mike's question on the, the timeline. So we're planning it in phases, and we're looking at running sewer main up on Baker Avenue in the next phase. And then we'll follow that with Andrews in a future phase. But it, it has to, gets me to dry lines for now until the sewage treatment plant is up and running at, you know, a good, safe capacity that we, we can add this extra load and not put the Keokah residents at risk with a sewer failure and we, we get a major leak and spills into Puhi Bay.
Thank you.
So this, the request that we put in, or part of, which is part of that twenty million, is only a portion of the funding that's required for this. We still need much more in order for it to really get to the point of what we're pursuing and our vision for that area.
Right. Kalani, I, sorry, I had a couple more things I missed.
Yes.
The other, the other project is, that, that's sort of been up and down because of the, the water problem we're having in, in Pu'upai. But we'd like to keep that project alive, the Kulianna project in Pu'upai. What we have, we actually have beneficiaries that have rebuilt the, the Neo Valley Road. It's actually a one-way road down, it's four by four. We have a temporary water tank that was in Anahola we used for the rebuild. They want to use that tank and put it up there. I mean, the, you know, the beneficiaries are trying to do, that's where they want to be. So they've done a lot of work on that, we'd like to keep that alive. Because we need to work with them on, on putting that, setting that tank. And then we need to work with, with Jonathan Schur on, with Seawarm to get to, to tie in the full mine divide and fill that tank as if we were gonna fill the, the reservoir. So, so that's where the beneficiaries are actually, their blood, sweat, and tears are in that. So, so that's where the beneficiaries are actually, their blood, sweat and tears are in that. They want to be there. So I'd like to keep that alive. My, my other question is, is we, and we don't show it in here, is the courtyards at Waipouli is, 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 you know, what, what we spent so far and there's been a lot of things with, you know, we started with Lytech, didn't get Lytech, now we go on to, to HUD. Understand we got some DIRF funding, so if, if maybe by the next, uh, I don't expect you to have all the numbers now, but by, by the 16th meeting, we can, we can have, where are we at now? You know, I'm, I'm hearing that we have electrical problems. Uh, I found out that, uh, I went on the website for Inner West. They said there are electrical problems, we'll have to do electrical assessment. My concern is that the costs are, are escalating, cost per unit. So, uh, if you guys can evaluate that and bring that back on the 16th, I'd just like to know where we stand before I aloha.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioners?
Chair? Unless we have anyone, any of the Commissioners online, I, I just want one last, uh, wanted to mention. So Kalani, um, I, I've received several inquiries to the status of all the different projects. And, uh, you know, when we look at the spreadsheet, it has the locations, which islands, et cetera, what the projects are. And the amount that we're, um, considering for the budget for approval, right?
Yes.
What would be helpful if, like, we had a short summary, right, of all the projects? Uh, just a brief thing, okay? Yeah, we're asking for X, uh, this is what we're gonna do. Uh, this is how long it's gonna take. Because that really helps when people ask, oh, yeah, when is Phase 2 in Honamook gonna be available and that, those types of questions.
Okay, thank you.
Very, very brief. Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, last chance. Okay, uh, let's see. Where are we? Guess that's it. Anything else, uh, Katie? Wanna give a summary or ask comments or suggestions?
No, if there's any questions about the administrative part or operating part of our budget, I'm available, but otherwise I don't have any additional comments other than don't give us grief on Monday, right? We, we did this workshop for you so you understand our submittal on Monday, so everything should conform. Of course, we're happy to address questions on Monday, but, yeah, that, so.
Okay, um, with regards to filling positions, who's, who's responsible? Like, I, my, my interest is like filling positions in East Hawaii, um, District Office. Who, who's actually responsible to getting that done?
We are. I mean, we have a HR department and then we do work with Brian, right, Jeremiah. Um, as far as recruitment needs, we have been trying, I know that we're trying to fill the second Homestead Services Assistant. I think they've tried to interview and nothing has really worked out yet. It has been, that position, if I'm not misspeaking, is a civil service position, so that is where it intersects with other departments, right, namely the Department of Human Resources and Development. So that does take a longer process, um, where we can, um, we've identified positions for kind of the state's fast track, right, the Operation Hawaii, Higher Hawaii. Um, when I spoke at the Shaw Convention, I did try to promote those positions, particularly the supervisor position in West Hawaii as well as the supervisor position on Molokai. And, um, there was a good suggestion from our beneficiaries, you know, let us know, right? If, you know, there might be someone in our communities who would be willing to, I just, we're, we'll push that out. I just haven't had a chance with everything else going on, um, to do that, but that was a good suggestion and we'll do that, we'll make that information. There is information on our website, but I was informed, not everybody has easy access to the internet. Site may not be the most user-friendly, so we will try other avenues to make information available.
Okay, thank you, Katie.
Chair, I just.
Chair, I have one, one more question for, for Kalani. Uh, Kalani, on the scattered lots on, in Kauai, I know we've had difficulty trying to get that information from, um, from the island supervisor on scattered lots that are available. There's one right on Kukuihali in the highway that's been there. We cleared it, I think, when, when, uh, when Stuart was here, we got it cleared and it's done. It, uh, the actual dust fence is starting to fall apart. We need to get that, we need to get that issued as soon as we can. But there are several lots throughout Kauai that are either vacant, not being used, we don't know what the status is and, uh, I, I, we just need some help on getting that done.
So, so we know that several thing. Thank you, Commissioner Nevis. Some of it sits in HSD still yet because it's been, it's still encumbered under lease agreement. And then there's, so we're working through that with them. We also have some that's kind, that's, uh, still there but teeing up to come to LDD so we can kind of get it prepped and then, uh, moved out towards. Uh, Lokahi Paoli has been working on scattered lots throughout the Pae'a Ina, so he can kind of speak to that in general.
Yeah, um, hot commission. Uh, I just, like Kalani said, uh, my job, I'm tasked with taking these, um, vacant lots or lots that have been deferred and brought back into inventory and hand it over to awards for Michelle them to award. So there are various slots statewide and Kauai has, um, several, uh, and I believe you said 447, uh, Kukuihali Road?
Yeah, try to, it's Kukuihali right in the corner, you have a lot.
That is one of the scattered lots, so we are trying to get back into rotation to award and get someone on the lot.
Okay.
And I think one of the, that particular one, because of the size of it, we're looking at possibly subdividing it, but we also had issues of access. And so, um, trying to work through that. You know, the other part is also working with awards and taking a look at what areas can we award now to be able to address not only owner build options, but also options where they just want to come in and they'll go through the repairs and renovations, et cetera. Uh, structurally, it looks good based upon our assessments, and so we're looking to award those. Um, you brought up a good point and I think that's something that we'll start to engage even more is having some of those active discussions with our district offices, uh, when they do meet on a monthly basis, just so we can all be on that same page. Some of it, once again, still sits in HSD because it's encumbered, but at least we can kind of identify. Even though it sits vacant, it doesn't mean that it truly is vacant, because there's actually a lease on there, so.
Very good, okay. Thank you, thank you, Kalani.
Uh, Commissioner Kaneko?
Yes, thanks Chair. Um, thanks very much to everybody, Kalani, deputy for putting together a, a pretty comprehensive look at things. I, I wanted to, um, go back to what Mike Kiliakini is talking about with the vacancies because, you know, and, and I understand, I understand how hard it is, uh, to recruit, maybe retain, et cetera, et cetera. But one of the things that would be very helpful to the people listening to 54 vacancies is that we're actually doing something to get those vacancies filled, especially in the servicing side of the house. Where one, and, and everybody else, we're getting overrun because we don't have enough people to support it. So I would, I would recommend that we just acknowledge this and not just say, okay, we've got, you know, all these vacancies, but here's what we're doing uh, to try to move and fill those vacancies. And here's what the public and very specifically native Hawaiians can do to help us get those vacancies filled. I, I think that would be good, uh, because we've had, we've got a reprieve. I think we're one of the only departments that really, and I know that it's, uh, Chair, because you and the staff fought so hard to have those. What we're, what we're planning to do to fill those is really important to our beneficiaries and the public who sees how fast we're moving out and, and we really need the help on the staff side. And that's, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, Commissioner Kaneko. I, I would, uh, ask all the Commissioners, if you're aware of individuals that might want to work for the department, uh, you know, please, uh, let us know. Uh, we do, we did fight hard at the last legislature to get those authorized, uh, the 19 positions actually funded. And that was, uh, you know, kind of a battle that went in, um, us collectively, uh, were successful in getting that, including, uh, getting the governor to reconsider and add it to his budget. So it's something we fought for and, uh, when the legislature convenes, uh, again, uh, in 2026, they're gonna ask, well, what's the status? And if it answers, oh, well, they're still vacant, that's not gonna go over well. So please, uh, if you know of anybody, there's clericals, there's, uh, professional levels, it's all kind of different, especially on the outer islands, which it's really a big need. Uh, your outer island Commissioners, please, um, we'll, we'll let you know what specifically the position, uh, if you want, uh, entails. So you know who might be, uh, would fit that particular position. Uh, it may not be, uh, you know, a clerical type and may require a little bit of background, uh, maybe a college education as well as experience. But it's real important that we work as a collectively together to try and fill those positions. Cause if we, you know, we, we are missing quite a few, um, positions and that's always been the case. Unfortunately, we also are having people leave the department for retirement or for personal reasons. So when those are vacated, again, you know, it just adds to the, the challenge that we have. I, I think in the, um, the department has picked up a lot of young people, which is real exciting, educated and, uh, you guys have seen in the more recent Commission hearings, their, their skill set. So I'm very happy that we are getting people that, um, you know, I look to them as maybe career employees. And that's what we need with this program, people that have, not only have vested interests, have the passion, but also the skill set. And I know, and some of them, you know, are waitlisters or are homesteaders. So even more so, they can relate to what, what we're trying to do at this department. So please, if you know of anybody that, um, is interested in a job and if you have any questions, feel free to, um, either ask Katie or myself and we'll get you that information. Okay, let's see, we got, um, uh, Leah, you have this on the agenda, executive session, are we gonna do that or no?
Uh, yes Chair, but before we do that, we have Item C, which is the presentation of the trust fund, um, request.
Okay.
So we have Deb at the table now for system modernization.
Sounds good.
Aloha Chair and Commissioners, Debbie Olivietto, um, System Modernization Project Lead, along with Karen Yedaw, who's the technical lead for this project. We're here to request a budget of 1.145 million to continue the work that we've started on the system modernization project. Uh, we're currently in the testing stage of the, um, final leg of the current, um,
Current phase.
Current phase of migrating the old APIC system into the new Salesforce system. And the money that we're requesting in the fiscal year 26 will take us in to the next phase of the project. I think Chair's.
Beautiful.
Hang on Chair.
Yeah, maybe you can give a little bit summary of, uh, what has happened today regarding the modernization?
Yes, so today, um, the background that we've, um, we started the project last year. And we went through all the different divisions that, um, will be affected when we move the old system onto the new system in Salesforce. And, um, found out what their pain points were and how we can assist them moving forward in this new technology.
Right, so our focus of, uh, the current phase, which is Phase 1, uh, that's gonna go live by the end of July. A majority of the focus on that is on, uh, HSD, our Homestead Division. Um, and we're focusing on a majority of, um, their processes. And then heading into the next phase, which is Phase 2, that's when we start branching out and more on focusing on, um, the infrastructure of Salesforce. Uh, so as a reminder, Salesforce is the, the technology behind this project. And what's that, what that's going to entail is a cybersecurity aspect of, um, Salesforce. And then later on enhancements for certain, uh, certain aspects of the project, which also still focuses on Homestead, uh, on our Homestead Services Division.
But part of the current project that we've also built out, um, the paper lease project, um, where for Michelle, Kalani's team, when we do these project lease awards.
Thank you. Yeah, let, let me also add, uh, you know, as we're moving forward, uh, not only trying to reduce our waitlist, uh, but also process, uh, lease, uh, transfers and successorship, as well as with the developers, uh, trying to get loans in place, as well as coordinate, uh, development by the contractor versus the, um, processing of our recipients. It, it's a horrendous, horrendous challenge and, um, that's why this Salesforce program is so important. And it's not limited just to the department, we're working at where we, to a certain extent, requiring the developers and some of them have, uh, uh, adopted this particular, uh, technology, uh, as well as the lenders. One entity that's been really, uh, admirable in their activities with the department is American Savings Bank. They not only have the Salesforce, they got certified to handle the 184A loan programs. And, you know, they have made money available, uh, including the, the, uh, any that sales, uh, is providing the Salesforce. Some of the nonprofits, they've made the program available at no cost. And in recognizing that for our department to really handle, and we're looking at close to 6,000 Homestead new leases that need to be processed, including the existing ones, over 10,000. So, you know, with the outer islands, uh, and typically using hard copies, mailing it back and forth, as well as signature, it, it's just impossible. And so we're trying to, you know, really upgrade that to not only give our staff, but the developers as well as the lenders, as well as our beneficiaries, the tools to expedite the process. And when you're trying to, you know, just fill these, uh, existing developments with, uh, participants, you gotta go through a whole ton of them to get the qualified and ones that are actually going to receive the. So this Salesforce, and again, I don't work for Salesforce, but I gotta tell you, it's, uh, something we need. And so, you know, we, and we're finishing the first phase. We gotta get up and to speed on the second phase. And so we're, that's why this additional funding is being requested. Any questions, Commissioners?
Uh, Chair?
Go ahead.
Yep, I just received a package this morning, so gonna have to, gonna have to get into it over the weekend before I have any questions, there's just quite a lot of stuff to absorb.
Okay, appreciate it. Any, uh, other?
Chair, I have a question. I, I know we're in the testing phase, but as I was reading through the packet, there was some information about licenses. And so if you could just share, um, how those licenses will work? Given an employee, if the employee gets a license, they leave. Can that be refurbished and given to another employee or how would that work?
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, yes, so the licenses is not tied to a specific staff member, but, um, we can, as you said, refurbish it to another, um, staff member if they depart from the department.
Yeah, we're trying to get a quantity, uh, quantity discount because I think there's something like 16 other, uh, state entities using it. So we're negotiating to get a, a low, uh, reduction in the purchase price of these licenses. So that actually, I mean, they're looking at us and kind of amazed at the price that we were getting. So we're, a- again, you know, as many of our, uh, staff people as possible, I want them to have the skill set in not only using the program, but, uh, sharing and, uh, explaining the process. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, I guess now we're going to the executive session, Leah?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay Chair, I just put the, um, the prompt on the screen, so we just. So we just seen a motion.
Okay, and we have a motion. We go into executive session. Okay, the commission will convene in an executive session pursuant to section 92584 HRS to consult with its attorneys on questions and issues pertaining to the commission's powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities. Is there a motion?
Yep, no more.
Hey, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we're in executive session.
Chair, give us a sec.
The Commission is reconvening from its executive session. The Commission reviewed and discussed its fiduciary duties as trustees of the One Home Commission Act.
Okay. And then, okay, you're good, now we can adjourn chair.
Okay, so we're now adjourned and our next regular commission meeting is on June 16th and 17th at 9:30 here. And so we're adjourned. Thank you everybody for attending and appreciate all your input and questions and especially staff on the presentation. Thank you everybody.
Great.
Bye.
Bye.